To do what the people have elected us to do, we need to be armed with the truth. If we can do that, then we can thoroughly do our jobs. We cannot thoroughly do our jobs if we don't have the correct information. If we're being fed a bill of goods, then the administration can pull the wool over your eyes. That's exactly what's happening.
Hi there and welcome to the Cloudcast. I'm Erin Hagerty and I'll be your host today. About nine months ago, Ninth Ward Alderman Anthony Beal introduced a proposal to establish legal counsel for aldermen that is separate from corporation counsel, which represents the city's interests as a whole. In addition to providing legal analysis for members of city council, the position would also serve as a parliamentarian representing aldermen on the floor of council chambers when there are disagreements between the mayor's administration and aldermen over process and rules of order, of which there have been many over the past year. While other aldermen, the mayor, and the city's top lawyer all say they agree that the city council should have its own legal representation, Beal's proposal has faced a rocky, rocky road as colleagues have sought to delay discussion on his proposal and even have introduced competing ordinances. Now, you may be thinking, this is all in the weeds. Why do I care about who represents aldermen and what even is a parliamentarian? Well, I talked to Alderman Beal about why he introduced the idea of legislative council in the first place and why your average Chicago resident should care about who is providing legal representation to the branch of city government responsible for making and passing laws. Let's dive in. So, last June, you introduced an ordinance that would establish legal counsel for aldermen that is separate from, you know, the city's corporation counsel, which represents the city as a whole. Now, we'll kind of get into where that proposal stands today and what it looks like and kind of the tumult it's faced since it was introduced. But first, I want to ask if you could explain a little bit about why you proposed this ordinance and what you're hoping it will fix or what, you know, what it'll bring to city council.
Right, well, I think what it will do is it will bring transparency, it will bring some independence and some clarity as far as the rules and regulations that we are governed by to run our meetings. Over the past few years, this administration has totally disregarded our rules and regulations by the Robert's Rules of Order that we're governed by and totally, totally disregarding the rules and doing whatever they want to do, when they want to do it. And, you know, it's just become so outrageous and so overbearing that it just prompted me to say, you know what, it's time for the city council to finally have our own corporation council, our own legal department, and our own independent budget analysis team. That way, we can truly do our jobs a lot better. Right now, it's a conflict of interest to have the parliamentarian working for the mayor's office, but then telling us what the rules are because they're appointed by the mayor. Who are they going to listen to? They're going to listen to the mayor. And so, and unless we can get 26 votes, which most of my colleagues won't do, to vote against the administration, to do the right thing. They have all come to me privately and said, "Beal, you're right. She's manipulating the rules. She's breaking the rules. She's doing these." But they won't say anything publicly. And so, I said, "You know what? We're going to go ahead and start this fight." And you can see, you've seen it, since I've introduced this ordinance, it has been one stall tactic after another, one delayed tactic after another. This administration doesn't want us to finally wake up and, you know, call the rules how they're supposed to be governed and then bring transparency to the budget process that, you know, we should be... Right now, the past three budgets have been so fictitious, they've been so out of whack, so out of balance. And so, we need our own financial analysis person who doesn't report to an alderman that the mayor has put over a committee to tell us what's best for finances, for ordinances, and our own parliamentarian to follow the rules. So, it is totally, totally to empower us as the body of city council to hold the administration accountable for doing the right thing. And that's what this ordinance does.
As you said, I've witnessed multiple times on, and not just with, you know, your proposal, but it seems like every meeting or virtually every meeting, there's a, you know, maneuvering to stall an ordinance or a measure, a proposal, and there's disagreement between what the mayor wants to do and what aldermen want to do. Not every alderman, but it seems that that point gets reached almost every meeting in recent months. So, the measure you first introduced proposed an independent contractor hired by a majority vote from the city council. But this past week, you introduced into committee a new version of the proposal to essentially revamp the Legislative Reference Bureau into the Office of Legislative Support of City Council. And this office's director would be, you know, appointed by the city council to serve aldermen with legal advice, analysis, opinions to carry out their legislative function, including, as you said, serving as parliamentarian when there are disagreements over process on the council floor. Can you explain also how your proposal has kind of changed over time or grown? Or how have you modified your proposal without having, without it even being called for a public meeting yet? How, what work went into that?
Right, well, first of all, when I first introduced the ordinance, it was to start the discussion, okay? But when you have the administration not even willing to have a discussion and my colleagues derailing the discussion, you know, the first ordinance I introduced was almost a shell. It was almost a shell bill that I said, "Okay, let's start having hearings and let's start hearing ideas from my colleagues to put into the ordinance and come up with something comprehensive." But when you can't get a hearing, when you can't even have a discussion, so I said, "Okay, let me just go back, dig in, do some research, and come up with what a lot of my colleagues have talked to me about and come up with something." And that's what I did. I came up with a very thorough ordinance that identified all the rules and regulations of each one of these positions and then where the money is going to come from. And so, I had to put an entire package together. And that's what I did. I put an entire package together and then, so I put in for a substitute with all the input that I've gotten from some of my colleagues as well as some legal minds outside the city of Chicago.
And I think now could be a good time to talk about how there are somewhat dueling, I don't know if you want to use that word, but proposals for this exact, you know, legislative council with alderman Brendan Riley, having, you know, previously saying on the council floor, yes, he has actively worked to delay your proposal. The direct quote was, "Yes, I've been participating in the parliamentary maneuvers to slow it down because I knew I was working on a better version."
Let me derail your ordinance so I can submit my own, you know, at the behest of the administration.
And I know, you know, watching city council meetings month after month, you could, you know when someone is trying to delay something for whatever reason, but it's not often I feel like they come out and say, "You saw me doing this. This is what I was doing. I have a better proposal. Now here are my two versions of a proposal to..." The proposal was similarly, you know, rename Legislative Reference Bureau as City Council, Office of Legislative Council. And he's taken, you know, jabs at your proposal, saying it lacked funding source, even though you've said it was introduced essentially as a shell ordinance. I'm wondering, have you guys worked together at all on bringing your proposals closer? Or how do you factor in what he has introduced?
I have never had a conversation with Alderman Riley. He has never called me, not once, for all the months that I've been fighting for this ordinance, not one time has he ever called me or said, "Beal, I want to work with you on this. You know, I think you have a great idea. I want to work with you on it." Instead, what he did was purposely derail it at the behest of the administration because he's carrying a mayor's water. And so, he derailed it and then tells me, when he derails it, "I have a better ordinance, so you need to get on top and get on my bill and support mine." I've never seen anything like that before in my life, you know? So, it's just, again, I know what he's doing. He's, you know, he's working with the mayor in order to, you know, try to pass something or derail it to where we don't even get a hearing on this before the next election. So, this is just another tactic, you know, because his ordinance is in rules. It hasn't even come out of rules. I had to force mine out of rules just to get the discussion going. And so, there is not a genuine movement to work together on this because Alderman Riley has never called me, not one time, in all the years he has been alderman. He has never called me one time to try to work with me on any issue. And now, he wants to just derail it and he is the one single-handedly derailed it, postponed it, DMP'd it, and then tells me, "I'm going to submit an ordinance just like yours. You need to support mine." I've never heard anything like that before in my life.
And have you, it sounded like he was supposed to have briefings on, or there were supposed to be briefings on his proposal today. I don't know, are you attending those briefings?
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. You know, that's, he's having briefings on his ordinance. I don't support his ordinance because, again, you know, my ordinance has been in, I've been fighting for it, I've been taking all the hits, I've been taking all the bumps and bruises to try to get this done. And, you know, he's just looking to come in on his white horse and take all the glory and he's not willing to work with anybody.
Yeah, and I still, like, my main question here, you know, it sounds like every alderman who I've talked to wants independent counsel. They want a parliamentarian. The mayor has said, I think she campaigned on this, saying that city council should have its own representation. She's said repeatedly, she, yeah, why haven't they done it yet? Corporation counsel has said, yeah, if that's what the city council wants, then they should have it. Why is it still seemingly impossible to get this?
To get it done?
If everyone agrees, there's this final place we want to get to. Why aren't we there yet?
Well, because it's not what a person says, it's what a person does. A person can say, "I'm in support of this. I'm doing this." But if their actions show something different, then that's what the true story is. I don't think the administration wants us to have our own counsel because she wants to continue to break the rules and use the rules to her advantage. And that's what you have seen. And so, I don't think there's a genuine movement by the administration for us to have our own legal advice, our own budget advice, and our own parliamentarian because then you will see truly, the administration will be exposed for breaking the rules of Robert Rules of Order that we're governed by. And so, I always say this, it's not what a person says, it's always what a person does. Watch their actions, not what they say.
And you've served as alderman under mayors prior to Mayor Lightfoot. Do you think this would have, would pan out different under Emanuel or Daley? I don't know, how is Lightfoot different from previous mayors?
Well, previous mayors never, they never blatantly broke the rules. They've never blatantly just tried to manipulate the law that we're governed by. And so, that's, that's the difference. Mayor Daley and Mayor Emanuel, they follow the rules of Robert Rules of Order. They follow the rules that we're governed by. This administration does not. They use the rules to fit their narrative when it's convenient for them, for it to fit their narrative. That's it and that's all. And so, there was really no need for us to have our own parliamentarian and our own legal because we were able to go to the law department and get honest answers, get honest advice. We were able to go and talk to different people to get different things. This administration has basically said, "These people work for me. You all are on your own." They don't want, you know, knowledge is power. And the administration does not want us to have the knowledge to have the power to show what's right. And so, that's why you shut people out. You shut them out so they don't get the information, so they're not armed with the truth. And that's what you're saying.
Kind of zooming out, all of this, you know, I find this interesting. I'd say anyone who follows city council closely, aldermen of course, find this, you know, important, having a parliamentarian, having city council have its own separate legal counsel. But to like, I don't know, your average Chicago resident, why should they care about this, this specific issue? How do you, or do they need to care about, you know, whether aldermen are, you know, represented by counsel that's separate from the city?
Right, well, you know, a lot of this is inside baseball. But at the same time, I think it's important for us to be able to fully do our jobs, to do what the people have elected us to do. We need to be armed with the truth. We need to be armed with what's really going on in this city. And so, if we can do that, then we can thoroughly do our jobs. We cannot thoroughly do our jobs if we don't have the correct information. If we're being fed a bill of goods, then the administration can pull the wool over your eyes. Is that, that's exactly what's happening. And so, we need to be armed with the truth. We need to be armed with what's going on really with the budget and we need to be able to put ordinances in without having them report back to somebody to say whether or not this is coming down the pipe so they can be ready to send it to the Rules Committee or this and... We cannot thoroughly do our jobs effectively by the people that are voted for us to do the job because information is being withheld and some of the information we get is not truthful information. Look at what's happening with the murder rate. They're saying that the murder clearance rate is 54%. That is the biggest lie that's going on in the city right now. The clearance rate is not 50 something percent because what they're doing is when they can't solve a murder, they close it and then they're saying that goes until we've solved a murder. And that's another thing that's the furthest thing from the truth. So, there's so many different things that are going on in this city that the people are being hoodwinked and don't know what's going on. And we as aldermen, it's our job to make sure that the truth comes out and that we can do what's right by the people. And if somebody is telling you mistruths, it's up to us to be those checks and balances. We can't be the checks and balances if we don't have the correct information.
And so, what's next for your ordinance?
Well, we're going to continue to fight. You know, every month, you see, I don't give up. I'm not giving up the fight because I know this is the right thing to do. And so, either the administration needs to, you know, publicly say she endorses this version or say that she doesn't. And, you know, we need to figure out what's going on from there. She says she supports it, come out publicly and say you support it then. So, we can, so the people that are, you have charged to hold up my ordinance can say, "Okay, well, I don't have, need to hold it up anymore because now the mayor supports it."
And you think the mayor saying she supports whatever proposal she supports, that will, the chips will kind of fall, where are they going to fall then?
We'll see. Because, again, I don't think it's what a person says, it's what a person does. So, she can say publicly, "Yes, I support this," but then behind the scenes, I don't want this to go anywhere. I want this to stay in committee, continue to derail it. So, again, it's not what a person says, it's what a person does.
And now, I want to shift to a different topic. I've been keeping my eyes on the ward remap. Now, you can, of course, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like you've been supportive of the Coalition map.
Coalition map, that is correct.
Largely from the Latino caucus since it was unveiled last year. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, why you decided to support that proposal?
Well, the Coalition map, and this is my third remap that I've been through. I'm number four in seniority in the city council. And I have never been through a remap process that has been so, just been so derailed and such backroom deals, such manipulation and lack of transparency, lack of forthrightness. Those things is what prompted me to support the Coalition map. When you look at the Coalition map, the Coalition map was inviting everybody in. "Let's all come in and draw a map and let's figure out and sit down and work this thing out." And so, by me being shut out of the Rules Committee map, you heard me correctly, by me being shut out and not be able to go in and draw my map is a total disgrace of the process. And so, and I know, you know, we all know that I don't have the best relationship with the mayor. We, it's no secret. But at the same time, you know, my colleagues have saw fit to shut me out of the map process. And so, I went and drew a map with the Coalition. The Coalition let me draw my map and, you know, they have an open and transparent process and you've seen it. They've put the information out publicly. We've submitted something to the city council. We've tried to have hearings. We've tried to have the discussion. When you look at the Rules Committee map, it is being drawn by Mike Casper, who was Mike Madigan's right-hand person in Springfield. And, you know, we all know that, you know, him drawing this map leaves questions as far as what's really going on behind the scenes. And so, that's why I went and supported the Coalition map. It is the only map that has been transparent, open and transparent with the process. And when you look at it, no other map has endorsements from anybody other than the Coalition map. The city council Rule Committee map, nobody is endorsing that other than the aldermen that have gerrymandered, you know, their opponents out of their wards, okay? So, their opponents can't run against them. And when you look at all the gerrymandering and when you look at all the communities that are being disenfranchised, such as the Allgell Gardens community, the Concordia, Eden Green community in my ward, they're being mapped into the 10th Ward, which it would take them an hour and a half to take a bus, L, and another two buses to get to their aldermen versus being able to jump on the 34 bus and come right down Michigan Avenue to get to my office. So, you're totally disenfranchising a large group of people. That's what their map is doing. When you look at Inglewood, Inglewood under their map still has six aldermen. Inglewood has been screaming for at least one alderman to represent all of Inglewood, maybe two. They would even accept maybe two. But to have six, you're disenfranchising a community that, you're splintering a community's voice six different ways. That's not right. And so, the other map is keeping communities together. And when you look at the People's Coalition, they have endorsed our map, who have been out here independently trying to, you know, come up with a decent map to represent the city of Chicago without all the gerrymandering, with all the backroom deals, with all the manipulation that's going on. That's why I endorse the Coalition map because it's no shenanigans, it's no backroom deals, it's keeping people in their community, keeping communities whole, and it was transparent and it was put before the people. And, you know, I think it was just a wonderful process and I endorse it wholeheartedly and I really implore all your listeners to endorse the Coalition map as well.
Why is that compaqness important? And is it different, like, on the far south side than it is in Logan Square, Bucktown? Is it hard? I mean, your wards are bigger. The wards, your ward and the 10th Ward are bigger than in land area than some wards up north. Why is it important that people be able to get to their aldermen's?
Because that's where people go for service. And if a person needs to see their alderman, they shouldn't have to take two buses and a L to get to see their alderman. That's totally disenfranchising a group of people as far as services that they're entitled to. And so, it's, this is all being done strategically. You hear Alderman Garza, she's fighting the same fight that I'm fighting because she knows that disenfranchising communities is wrong and she knows that it will be extremely hard for her to represent that community when they can't even get to her office if they really needed to. You're talking about maybe a three-hour trip just to go see their alderman. And that's just the trip back and forth. That's not right. That's totally disenfranchising a group of people. And so, me and Sue Garza, we agree on it. She doesn't want to represent Allgell because she doesn't want to disenfranchise those people and she knows that it's the right thing to do to keep them in the Ninth Ward to where I can continue to represent that particular community. And so, that's what we're trying to do. So, me and Sue Garza are in lockstep, working together because the Rules Committee map is totally done unjustly. It was done behind the scenes, backroom deals, totally gerrymandering in order to manipulate, you know, the people to maximize their interests and not the people's interests.
But what about all of those public hearings?
Those public hearings were all shenanigans. What was, if you look at all those public hearings, what was the outcome? What actually happened? Was there any progress? Or was it all grandstanding and showboating to say, "Oh, well, we had all these public hearings"? What, if you can show me one line that had been moved on the Rules Committee map based off of those public hearings, show me one line in the map process that was moved off the public hearing. And I'll gladly wait as long as it takes for you to get that information back to me.
Well, I guess you'll have to talk to someone who was able to control the lines on the map. That is not me. It's all but certain at this point that it's, that voters will choose the next ward map.
Well, we're extremely hopeful that there'll be a 12-hour, last-minute negotiation to stop the referendum. I really would hope that that is the case. If not, then we are prepared to take it to the voters. You know, all the community groups have endorsed the Coalition map. All the people who have been fighting for this same cause have endorsed the Coalition map and nobody is endorsing it other than the aldermen that were part of the backroom deals.
So, yeah, now I just wanted to ask, is there, what are you hoping to work on this year? I know we're, you know, already halfway through March here, but it feels like the year just began. Can we expect any, I don't know, new projects, new legislation coming from you or?
Yeah, you know, I always have something in the works. You know, I'm always working hard for my community and I do have some wonderful, exciting things that I'm looking to launch this year. As you know, I've been still working to get my cop house up and going and that has been a challenge in itself, working with the administration. But I think the cop house, we've already bought a house. When I say we, the organization has bought a house and we're working with the city in order to get the resources in there, but the city is slow-dragging that process.
And for anyone who isn't familiar, could you just explain what briefly, what a cop house is?
Absolutely. A cop house is an idea that we got from Racine, Wisconsin. Racine, Wisconsin has six cop houses. And since the inception of the cop house, crime has been reduced by 66% in Racine, Wisconsin. And so, what it is, you go into the most problem area where you're having a lot of problems and you take an abandoned house vacant and you purchase it, rehab it, and put resources in there such as caps. You know, Tom Dart said he's willing to put Cook County sheriffs in there and we bring all the wraparound services from the community in there and it becomes a community hub in the most problem area of any community. And so, we're going straight to the heart of a problem area in my ward and that cop house is going to, you know, be redeveloped. And the beauty of it is it's going to be a freshly rehabbed house. And so, once the problems in that area subside, then we sell that house to somebody from a low-income resident and they can buy a brand-new renovated house with all new appliances, all new everything, and they get a really decent house after we solve those problems. And then, we take the proceeds from that sale and we move them to another house somewhere else where we're having problems and duplicate the whole same process. We're working with CRED in order to bring the program into the cop house as well with Arnie Duncan and his group. We're looking at bringing Kaboom in because we want to put a play light on the block or next to the house because we want it to be a community house. I want people to have community meetings there. I want people to, we may have a reading room there. We may have a small daycare in there. It's, so, you know, once the house is almost complete, we're going to have community meetings to have a feel on what the community is looking for within this cop house. And so, every cop house is different in Racine, Wisconsin because every community is different. Every community wants different things in their own cop house. And so, that's the concept of the cop house. And the beauty of this cop house is at no expense to the taxpayers, is totally funded by private corporation. And so, it's not costing the city a dime. You know, so we just have to put the resources in there. And, and again, corporate has stepped up, SC Johnson has stepped up and provided $250,000 to start this process because they're the ones in Racine, Wisconsin, funding a lot of the cop houses in Racine, Wisconsin that has truly shown a track record for reducing crime. And so, we're just not reinventing the wheel, but we're just bringing that program here to the city of Chicago and, you know, I'm excited about it. So, hopefully, we have it open sometime this summer before, you know, the so-called violent season kicks in in the city of Chicago and we're really excited about it. And so, with that, we have other things that are happening in the area. You know, we're desperately trying to get a hotel chain in the community. So, we're working real hard to try to accommodate that. And so, we have other, you know, people who are looking to bring in some more big-box industrial type of businesses into the area. So, we're really excited about that as well. So, there's a lot of potential happening, but at the same time, look at everything that we have done. Look at the National Monument that is online now, bringing tourists into the area.
It's incredible.
You know what I mean? I mean, to have that in the Pullman community and the Rosen Pullman community is nothing short of amazing. And if people haven't seen it, they need to come down and tour it. It's the only national monument in the city of Chicago, the second in the state of Illinois. So, we're really excited to have Rangers walking around in our community. So, you know, those are great things. So, there are great things happening in this city. And so, we want to continue to have the momentum. Um, and so we want to continue to have the momentum to continue to move forward. Amazon is doing well, the Community Center is doing well, the Pullman Community Center, um, you know, um, SC Johnson. Uh, who bought Method is doing well, you see, uh, the Walmart is still doing phenomenal, we have a new Covers that we opened up. Uh, um, you know, late last year, so we're really, really excited about the progress that we're making. And there's so many more things that we're working on that's going to be coming down the pipe here real soon.
Well, thank you for taking the time, um, this week. Interested to see, uh, how, how Wednesday's city council meeting goes, so.
Well, I definitely appreciate you taking the time to invite me and it's always a pleasure to talk to you and, and, and your listeners and so. Uh, you know, we just want to bring some transparency and bring, uh, some honest discussion here to the city of Chicago.
This episode of the Cloudcast was produced by me, Aaron Hegardine, and edited by Alex Nitkin. We'll have another episode of the Cloudcast ready for you in two weeks.